Followed by the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Sutter.
Lord, we thank you for your presence and we thank you for all the gifts you give us. And we ask your blessing on this meeting that we'll be able to get through it in a civil manner. And we just ask your blessing on everyone that has come. Pray this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy for you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move for approval?
Second.
And moved by Councilman Hutchison, seconded by Councilman Neal to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six to zero. We now have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and will be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests. In which event, the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate item. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. President.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to remove item seven, I need to double check. Item seven off the consent agenda.
Are there any other issues from the consent agenda? Hearing now entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Hare to accept the consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutter?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries eight, zero. Item number two, presentations for recognition of service. I first invite Mayor Christensen and Mr. David Edgell to the podium for the presentation. For David Edgell for his service on the Public Advisory Committee of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, referred to as the MPO, from January 2000 through July 2002. And for his service on the Silver Lake Commission from May 2000 through May 2016. Mayor Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Edgell, on behalf of the city of Dover and its citizens, you have served us well. Not only did you work for us at one time, but you stepped forward to serve on committees. Many are called, but few serve. So we thank you for your service and we'd like to present you with the small token of appreciation on behalf of the citizens of the city of Dover. Would you like to say something, sir?
Sure. I just want to thank the city of Dover for the opportunity to serve. It has been an honor. I was moved to sort of step down from the Silver Lake Commission after 16 years because of so many people who expressed an interest to serve and had some new ideas. And I hadn't realized it had been 16 years. It had flown by very quickly. The lake is certainly a passion of mine and it's a great natural resource and asset for the city and its citizens. Just hope that committee keeps moving forward. I know it well under Dean Holden's able leadership. So again, it's been an honor to serve. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Our next honoree is Ms. Cindy Small, but I don't believe she is here this evening. So I'll ask that we defer that until another date when she can be present. I would invite Mrs. Dorothy Snyder to join Mayor Christensen at the podium. Mrs. Snyder, present. Yeah. Invite our librarian, Margie Seer, to come forward with the mayor to present the certificate, the award for Mrs. Dorothy Snyder for her service on the Dover Public Library Advisory Commission from June 2001 through June 2016.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Ms. Margie, I wish Ms. Snyder was here to accept this token of the city of Dover's appreciation for her long service to the library commission. However, I'm sure that you will get it for her and it's just a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. I will make sure that she gets this. And I do want to say that Mrs. Snyder served the library commission for 16 years and she was an unwavering support for the library and a real champion for the library and all of our projects. And she was devoted to the city of Dover. And we thank you very much.
I do know that Colonel Robert Welsh is here. I'd ask him to come to the podium and join Mayor Christensen as we honor him for his service to the planning commission for the period July 1998 through June 2016. Mayor Christensen.
Well, Colonel, not only did you serve your country with honor and valor, but you have done an exemplary job on the planning commission over these many years and we appreciate your service to the city of Dover. So on behalf of the mayor and council and the citizens of the city of Dover that you served so ably in both of your professions, we'd like to thank you and present to you the small token of our appreciation for your service. And we offer you the mic for a few words, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Christensen. I appreciate it. And thank you, members of council, for the honor and the cup. It was an honor to have served the city of Dover for 18 years. I remember playing golf with Mayor Hutch. At the time, Mayor Hutch. And I mentioned that I've lived here for a long time and I felt like I had an obligation to the community. And if he had a committee that I could serve on, I would be glad to do that. And about a week later, I got a phone call from him that said he'd like for me to serve on the planning commission. So here I am, 18 years later, and much like Dave Edgell, I think it's time to move on and let somebody else come in with some new ideas and give me a little more time to spend on the golf course and to watch my new night football. But once again, thank you very much. It's been a real honor. I love the city of Dover and I was proud to have served. Thank you.
Item number three is a presentation on Maurice Sendak. Fifty years, fifty works, fifty reasons memorial exhibition. I'd invite Margie Seer, Director of the Dover Public Library, to the podium for the presentation. Ask you to introduce your colleague and tell us all about this event, which I am very much looking forward.
I have a story to read you. The night Max wore his wolf suit and made mischief of one kind and/or another, his mother called him Wild Thing and Max said, "I'll eat you up." So he was sent to bed without eating anything. That very night, in Max's room, a forest grew and grew and grew until his ceiling hung with vines and the walls became the world all around. And an ocean tumbled by with a private boat for Max and he sailed off through night and day and in and out of weeks and almost over a year to where the Wild Things are. And when he came to the place where the Wild Things are, they roared their terrible roars and gnashed their terrible teeth and rolled their terrible eyes and showed their terrible claws till Max said, "Be still," and tamed them with a magic trick of staring into all their yellow eyes without blinking once. And they were frightened and called him the most Wild Thing of all and made him the king of all Wild Things. And now cried Max, "Let the Wild Rumpus start." They rumpus'd and they rumpus'd and they rumpus'd. "Now stop," Max said, and sent the Wild Things off to bed without their supper. And Max, the king of all Wild Things, was lonely and wanted to be where someone loved him best of all. Then all around, from far away across the world, he smelled good things to eat. So he gave up being king of where the Wild Things are. But the Wild Things cried, "Oh, please, don't go. We'll eat you up. We love you so." And Max said, "No." The Wild Things roared their terrible roars and gnashed their terrible teeth and rolled their terrible eyes and showed their terrible claws. But Max stepped into his private boat and waved goodbye and sailed back over a year and in and out of weeks and through a day and into the night of his very own room where he found his supper waiting for him. And it was still hot. Where the Wild Things are. Many of us in this room grew up hearing the words read to us by others, reading the words to others or seeing the pictures of Max and his monsters. It doesn't matter whether we heard or read the words. We all remember Max. Where the Wild Things are was written, illustrated, and published by Maurice Sendak in 1963. It was not the first book he wrote or illustrated, but it was the book which launched his career and made him one of the most beloved and iconic children's book authors of all times. Maurice Sendak passed away in 2012 at the age of 83. The city of Dover and the Dover Public Library are honored to host the amazing exhibit now on a nationwide tour honoring the life and works of Mr. Sendak. I'd like to introduce to you Catherine Wimberley, who is the head of our youth services department. And she'll tell you a little bit more about this amazing opportunity.
I will if I can figure out how to turn this off. So, as Margie said, I am here to talk to you about an exhibit that we are going to be receiving at the Dover Public Library at the end of this month. It's hard to sum up the importance that Maurice Sendak has had in all of our lives. As Margie said, you know, children all over the world have grown up reading his works and they in turn have read them to their own children. He was a prolific author. He wrote and illustrated over 100 books. And he did more than that. He became, in the second half of his career, a renowned artist for set design. He designed the set and costume for Tchaikovsky's Nutcracker Ballet. Sendak was a recipient of numerous awards, including the Caldecott Medal, which is actually considered the Pulitzer Prize of children's book illustration. Sendak is credited with changing the very genre of children's literature. Of his work, he once said, "If I have an unusual gift, it's not that I draw particularly better or write particularly better than other people. I've never fooled myself about that. Rather, it's that I remember things that other people don't. I recall the sounds, feelings, and images, the emotional quality of particular moments in childhood." Sendak's story taught all of us and children that it's okay to be afraid and to trust in their imaginations. The exhibit has been touring the country since 2013, the 50th anniversary of the publication of Where the Wild Things Are. As I said, it's going to be arriving in Dover at the end of this month and it is the only place in Delaware that this exhibit will be stopping. The exhibit features 50 selected items spanning Sendak's impressive career from illustrations for a book report that he wrote when he was 15 to poster and set designs for the ballet and, of course, works and drawings inspired by Where the Wild Things. Each art piece will be accompanied by comments and quotes from celebrities, authors, politicians, and noted personalities, all of whom discuss the importance of Sendak's work in their own life. The library will be creating interactive spaces to go along with this exhibit. We are very excited to have partnered with fantastic organizations like the Children's Theater, Polytech, and local community artists to transform the library into an interactive space. Anyone coming into the library between July 29th and September 11th will basically walk into the pages of Sendak's books. We will have Max's bed. We will have Max's boat. We will have jungle scenes and monsters all around the library. We've created several fantastic programs to go along with the exhibit. The library's mission is to inform, educate, and entertain. But amongst staff, our secret motto is that we are not your grandmother's library. We want programming to be exciting. We want to foster literacy, creativity, and imagination. And last, but certainly not least, we want to bring our services into the community. We recognize that we are more than just bricks and mortar. And nowhere is that more apparent than the programming that we offer. We have partnered with several organizations in Dover to create programs that complement the exhibit that will be here. The Biggs Museum will be helping us host the exhibit. Half of the artwork will be at the library. Half will be at the Biggs. The Children's Theater of Dover and the Ballet Theater of Dover will be putting on performance at the Schwartz Theater for us. These programs will be inspired by Sendak's works. The Gray Fox will also be hosting a breakfast with the monsters. Children will be invited to have breakfast at the Gray Fox Grill and then have a special story and create crafts. We will have a film screening, the Liberty Weekend, so that will be September 3rd, of Where the Wild Things Are out on Lockerman Way Plaza to encourage members of our community to get out, visit our merchants, and get to know each other. Participants will also, you know, we have passive programs. So anyone who visits will get invited to participate in a scavenger hunt. Find certain images all around at the Biggs and at the Dover Public Library. People who enter into the raffle, they have a chance to win a prize that's sponsored by Fornies, too. So we really have, really tried to partner with as many people as possible. As you will see here, these are just a few of our partners and sponsors. The list of people who have added their creativity, have given their ideas, and really have helped to bring this program to fruition, there are just too many to even name. But while I'm here, I would like to say thank you to all of them. And I would like to say thank you to everyone here for listening and ask if anyone has some questions for me. Yes?
Are there any questions?
First off, I want to categorically deny that I was a model for Sendak, even though there are certain resemblances to his monsters. I also want to point out that President Slaven had an excellent article, an op-ed piece, in terms of our concern for youth. And I don't think, I think this is a marvelous example of our concern and what is available. I want to applaud the library, your staff, and the integration of all of these events, which are marvelous. And I hope it has an outpouring from Dover and the surrounding area will come in and enjoy this program, which is an outstanding program that you have designed and brought about for the Biggs, for the Schwartz Center. Integrating all of this, the Gray Fox, is a marvelous program. I think it's outstanding. I applaud you. It is marvelous. And it's not to draw attention to these characters, which may or may not resemble me. I'm old enough for him to have done this. And I want to compliment you for this program. And I hope the turnout is absolutely astounding from the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We now have before us Agenda Item Number Seven, Discharging the President's Counsel on Public-Private Partnerships in the Future of City Hall, Wyant Hall, the former Dover Library, and Other City Properties. This was requested to be pulled off the consent agenda by Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question. Has a report been done by the committee with recommendations?
I do not believe a report has been done by the committee. The committee has not met in more than a year.
Could...
And it's a council, I'm sorry. It's not a...
Could, it would be a positive thing to actually see all the information. I know the committee was waiting on some items that it requested, which are now being done, which include the appraisals and the like. It'd just be a positive thing if it could do one more, pull that information, wrap it up, do this report, and be done. I mean, that's just what I would request.
I would instruct the city clerk to help make that happen. I think the city manager may have some of that information as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the item? So I'll need a motion to discharge the president's counsel on public-private partnerships.
Mr. President, I would just move that this be deferred for a month to allow that particular information to happen so that all the work done by the commission would have the opportunity to be brought forward.
Motion's been made to defer this item for one month. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson, seconded by Councilman Lewis to defer this item for one month. Is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Sutter?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mr. Hare?
No.
Mr. Hutchison?
No.
No. Motion fails. There are motion then to discharge the president's counsel on public-private partnerships.
So moved.
Second.
And moved by Councilman Hare and seconded by Councilman Hutchison. Is there any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Sutter?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes. Motion carries six, two. We now have Agenda Item Number Eight, Reappointments Recommended by Mayor Christensen, which were deferred during the council meeting of June 27, 2016. The item was deferred at that time when Councilman Lewis had questions of Mayor Christensen. Christensen was then not available to answer them. Councilman Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Slaven. I subsequently spoke with the mayor with regard to these appointments. And the issue I had, as I indicated, it's nothing personal against the appointees, but I have issue with the process and how we are recruiting. And I would like to see the process changed in the future, possibly a committee maybe set up. Because I think we need to do a better job in recruiting and getting it out there. I mean, do we advertise that there are openings on these boards and commissions? Do we put it on the website? When I questioned the mayor about that, he had indicated no. When the mayor was running for office, he had indicated to myself and others that he wanted to see new people on these commissions. He wanted fresh blood with new and innovative ideas. So that's why I questioned the mayor, you know. Does he have intentions of appointing new people? Can we change the recruitment process? And that's where I stand at this juncture. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and be a rubber stamp. I don't know about anybody else.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Sutter?
My concerns, I concur with Councilman Lewis. If we appoint someone to a committee, I think it would be best, serve the best interest of the city of Dover if they have some kind of credentials or that reflect their resume for that commission. I don't think that we really need to appoint people just because, you know, they want to be on that committee. I think that their resume should reflect the position that they're being appointed to so that the decisions that's being made on behalf of that committee, of that individual, will reflect the knowledge that they have and just not someone who just is filling a position. Thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilman Lewis and Councilman Sutter for bringing up something important. And that is, we need to, I think we need to look and tend to make a motion that we ask the staff to come up with a little bit of a public relations plan to promote. For instance, right on our website, if you go through, click on the city website, committees, commissions, and then it will come up where you can apply right online. And that's wonderful. And by the way, everybody listening who wants to be involved, hear from a lot of you, do that. We need your application, your interest. But there needs to be more promotion. It needs to be linked to our Facebook. It needs to be put out, particularly when, a couple months before these annual appointments come up in the papers. It needs to be promoted better. There needs to be a plan. And I'd like to see such a plan. As for these appointments, I think they're all solid and I intend to vote for them. And I, they're all very solid people and, you know, they did that process and I don't think they should be hindered because they did it and other people didn't know about it. I don't think that would be fair to them, but I like, but I think the issue is important that's being raised and that needs to be done. And so, Mr. President, I make a motion that we ask the staff to devise a public relations plan for expanding appointments to city committees and commissions and report that to the Legislature and Finance Committee in the next 60 days.
Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson. Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Councilman Lewis. Can I ask for a clarification on the motion? Would you prefer that the recommendation for staff to coordinate, would it be okay to have it coordinated by the city clerk's office as they tend to keep track of all?
Sure.
That way, maybe perhaps some of the demographic analysis to show that we have broad representation or we don't.
Well, I'm sure they'll want to also get involved, the PR team, person, and the like. But yes, that's why I left it broad, because they're leaving a lot to the city manager's discretion with the city clerk.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson, seconded by Councilman Lewis Motion's been made by Councilman Anderson, seconded by Councilman Lewis, to have staff report back on a public relations campaign, and have that report back to Legislative, Finance, and Administration within 60 days. Discussion, Councilman Suddler?
My main concern is that the individual applying has a skill set that will enhance the committee as a whole, or help the committee as a whole. I think that we do a great job with the current system that we have in place. I don't really see how we need to spend more time trying to advertise or expand our current system, when I believe that it works. And I know that the city manager and the city clerk's office, they have a lot on their hands already, and I think that that energy could be used or channeled in a more productive way, other than just expanding. I think that our system that we have works, but I am for requiring a resume that reflects the committee that you're going to serve, that I am supportive of. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis?
I happen to disagree as far as our current system working the way it does. There's a lot of people out there in the community that I know would like to serve government, and there's no way of them knowing that there's a vacancy on these boards and commissions. So I think it has to come down to, how are we advertising? How are we recruiting to fill these positions? And when I asked the mayor, he had indicated, when I asked him, I says, "Do we put ads in the newspaper?" He says, "No." I said, "Do we advertise on a city website?" He says, "No." I said, "How come?" He says, "Well, I don't have money in my budget to put it in the newspaper. As far as the website, I don't know why we can't advertise on there." I'd like to see people on these committees with expertise in the field of the committee that they're serving on. That's my position.
Thank you. Councilman Cole, then Councilman Suddler.
I agree, I think, with the concept of it, but kind of like Councilman Suddler said, I, these are mayor and council appointments, if I'm understanding it, right? So to ask staff to recruit, I'm not sure where the, I don't know if we're moving into an area, like, it's our responsibility to find someone who is qualified. Not that we can't use more information, I mean, I can always use more information to find someone, but I, I don't know where we're headed on that, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I have Councilman Suddler, then Councilman Hare.
I yield to Councilman Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, I think he makes a very good point. If, I, I think that the most important thing, you bring up valid comments here, but I do think that it is a mayor and a council function and responsibility to make these appointments. And quite frankly, if we want to throw it back on the committee as a whole to sit down and discuss it, come up with a plan, I certainly do not think we should refer it to staff. It should be done in-house by mayor and council, if we're going to change it. Thank you.
I have Councilman Hare, then Suddler, then Councilman Hare.
I guess my question is basically what's been mentioned. It's the mayor's appointments, it's the council appointments, and what we're, what I'm hearing is that we want to make sure we're getting qualified people to put on these committees that have these credentials. But then, I guess, what we're saying is that people that don't have to have credentials or qualifications for running a city with a multimillion-dollar budget are going to pick the people to come on these committees. Like, what qualifications do we have for the position we hold? Are we being vetted, saying, by staff, saying, "What's your qualifications to come in here and manage this city, a multimillion-dollar budget?" I mean, we're all saying that we're qualified, so we should be qualified to decide who we pick. And the, and the people that I know that are interested in serving, I make it aware of them when there's an opening. It's part of our responsibility in our district, is to let the people in our district know, "Here's an opening, if you're interested, you know, I'll throw your name in." And you talk to them, and you know who's not. I mean, I don't want to see a staff or, anyway, I mean, there's enough work the staff has to do already.
Right.
So, I mean, I think we're, I don't know what we're trying to do. I mean, trying to make sure we get a former electric director to be on the utility committee or whatever, I mean, we get, we, I think we get pretty good people on these committees that have a pretty, pretty good background.
I have Councilman Suddler, then Lewis, then I'm going to have a comment myself. So Councilman Suddler?
Well, you know, I can see both points, but, you know, like I'm saying, I just think that staff is already overwhelmed. We have parks and recs issues, we have other issues, other committees, that require a lot of the staff members, staff's time, city clerks, and city manager. And I think that we'd be overwhelming them. Not saying that's a valid point, just saying I think it'd be overwhelming. And my main question was to the city clerk's office, how are we receiving separate from someone, one councilperson saying, "This is opening, you should go see city clerk's office." Do they call? I mean, we don't do any kind of advertising, because I believe at one time, there was some advertisement. Am I, am I wrong in that thinking?
Back some time ago, the DHRC did advertise openings. That was many years ago.
Okay, so that was, okay, so basically, city clerk's office, no one, we don't do any advertisement at all in regards to the committees, only if they call, then we say, "Yeah, we have an opening."
Yes. All, all the committees are listed on the website, and there is a link to the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Lewis?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to Mr. Hare's comment. As far as we, okay, being qualified to run a multimillion-dollar city, isn't that why we have campaigns? We vet our experience out there and let the voters decide, okay, if we are qualified to serve in this position? You know, I don't know if Mr. Anderson would be willing to withdraw his motion, but I would be more inclined to have a volunteer committee set up, maybe of a couple of council members, to try and resolve this.
Sure. I just wanted to offer a couple of thoughts that I had on the appointment process, from my perspective, as someone who has to make recommendations on, on the appointments, for, especially for the citizen members of the committees that we have. The lenses that I use to make those have to do with qualifications, but then you also have a lens that we want to make sure that we have male, female balance on our committees, because as you look around this room, there are no female members of city council at this time, and, and that's, that's a perspective that, that we need, and representation that we need. I have tried to ensure that we have minority representation on every committee, and I think we achieved that with this, this round of appointments. I would like to, as much as possible, bring new faces into, into the, while also accepting the fact that we have some veteran retired employees, and some people who have been involved with the city who can bring great value to the discussions. And then there's always the look across districts to make sure each of the four districts has representation. So we're talking, we're not talking about a lot of appointments that the city council president makes for citizen members, but nonetheless, those are the lenses that we should be aware of, in addition to, obviously, in addition to, first and foremost, the qualifications for someone to serve, that we want to have a representative body that represents truly what the city really kind of looks like. So I have Councilman Anderson and Councilman Neal. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think that we have a public relations officer, and he already does the job of putting out press releases, he already updates web, the website and Facebook, so you're not overwhelming anyone to make sure links are put on the site, and to make sure that a couple months before the, the major appointments, that, that gets released to the media, as well as being promoted on the site. It just needs to be planned. If we want to do it by a committee, I would have no problem with that, and I would support an amendment to refer that issue to the committee of the whole. And I think that's a perfectly fine way to do it. It's, so if somebody would, well, I'll move, I'll move to, first, I'm going to move to withdraw that motion and make another one, instead of amend it, if that's okay, Mr. President?
Second.
If the secondor agrees?
I, I concur to withdraw the motion.
The motion's been withdrawn, so go ahead, you can start over with your vote.
All right. Well, I'm going to let Councilman Lewis make it.
Go ahead. You can take the ball.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that we refer the issue of designing, expanding the recruitment for city committees and commissions to the committee of the whole.
It's been moved, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Councilman Lewis is seconding it. I want to get clarification. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Neal's been waiting patiently to be heard here. It's going to turn into a monster soon if I don't call on him.
The monster has experience in public affairs in several different places. So I, I would basically point out that before we make a, when we suggest a person to be appointed, the city clerk has gone ahead and has asked them for a biography, so that we have a little bit of a bio. So it is not a blind type of thing that we do, but there's nothing wrong with basically letting the public know that if you're interested in serving, that you can do so, and you can contact us through the, the website or Facebook to let us know that you're available for it, and what your qualifications would be to serve. So I don't mind opening it up and making sure that people know about it, so that it's a transparency. But I also know that the clerk does do a marvelous job in saying, "Would you please send us a bio?" So that we have that information that goes out when an appointment is made. So I think if we send it to the committee as a whole, we can work this thing out intelligently.
Councilman Lewis?
All, all I'm basically looking for at this juncture is a better recruitment tool, so the public as a whole is aware that there is an opening on a particular board or committee.
So the motion's that, I'm sorry, Councilman Hare. Thank you.
Sending this, just sending this to the council as a whole, we're going to end up doing what we're doing tonight. Why don't we have, like, two councilpeople or something, get together, they, they work it out, maybe I'd recommend Councilman Anderson, Councilman Lewis, come back to the council as a whole with their recommendations. Let them put it together. Because this is, I don't think we need to have another thing on an agenda as a council as a whole, because we might not come to any agreement, but let them vet it together, let their, their idea, let them come back with suggestions and recommendations.
We were this close. All right, we have the motion that's before us. Councilman Hutchinson?
Just a comment, and it's critical at the end, the mayor has certain appointments that he or she gets to make, the council president has appointments he or she gets to make, and we ultimately confirm or not. But I do like the idea of creating some type of method whereby more people could at least get their resumes in for consideration. But the ultimate decision, many of them go to the mayor or the council president for us to consider.
So the motion that's before us is to place this on the, I believe, the July 26 Council Committee, Council Committee of the Whole agenda, where we'll discuss it, and I would ask that perhaps Ms. Sass be available for that, as well as Ms. McDowell, and we can talk through some of the issues of how to promote that and publicize that. Does that satisfy everyone's concerns about that?
Yes.
All right, we're ready for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven to one, with Mr. Hare. We now have Agenda Item Number Nine, City Managers' Announcements. Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Council President Slavin. Very quickly...
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that the appointments be approved.
Yeah, we need to backtrack.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilman Anderson. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of Items Eight A and B, the appointments to the Board of Adjustment of Casey Jeff and William Huffnall, and Eight B, the appointment to the Planning Commission of Kathleen Wilk.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Suddler, seconded by Councilman Anderson. Is there any discussion on the matter?
We don't need to wait to make sure they're qualified? Okay.
All in favor?
Call for the motion.
All, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Not voting.
Why?
Because I'm not sure if they're qualified or not, Mr. Hare.
Motion carries seven-zero with Councilman Lewis, reported as not voting. Item Number Nine now is the City Managers' Announcements. Mr. Koenig.
Thank you, Council President Slavin. Staff was alerted over the weekend regarding a potential problem related to some of our tax billing. This issue appears to be related to tax bills, our tax property owners that are receiving what we call doubles, they own two pieces of property in the exact same name, and as the billing went out, there appears to be a problem with some of those bills. A total of 75 bills were reissued today, and that was based on contact of approximately 40 property owners calling us. We do believe that this issue is contained simply to a portion of the doubles that were mailed out. There are a number of people that have double properties that did receive the correct billing, but we would like anybody who receives an incorrect billing, or does not receive their billing, to contact staff immediately, so we can reissue a bill to them. I believe all the tax billings have now been mailed out, and everyone should receive their tax bill by the end of the week. And as far as the root cause of this, we're, we're not sure whether it was a sorting issue or a humidity issue, but it does seem to be relatively small in the, in the big picture of things. We issue 7,500 tax bills every year. Mrs. Bundick has indicated that the customer service staff, as well as her staff, have been very diligent at resolving the issues, and I'd like to thank both her staff and the customer service staff for doing everything they can to resolve the issues. And if anybody does notice a problem, to please contact the city, either by phone or come into the offices, and we will immediately reissue the bills, if there are any additional problems.
Councilman Hare?
Is this, the due date on these, is this the year we're getting, everyone's getting the month?
That was only in the business license component.
Oh, the business license, okay. So when are the tax bills due?
I think they're due at the end of July, July 31, so delinquency technically starts on August 1st with penalty.
Okay. My only comment is that this is the 12th, or 11th of July, okay? I haven't received my tax bill yet. So we're telling people that if they do get it by the end of the month, which would end of the week, which would be 15.
Right.
You've got basically two weeks to pay it. I think we need to get something, but at least we're giving them 30 days. I mean, because some people, that could be a little tight, especially if they don't have the tax bill and they get paid different times of the month.
Right.
It just, I don't know, it just seems like we're, it's a short time, that's all.
Understood. Councilman Lewis, then Councilman Suddler.
Mr. Koenig, is this going to have any implications as far as peoples whose taxes are paid directly by the mortgage company, to your knowledge?
I would defer to Mrs. Bundick, if she can come down.
Mrs. Bundick, if you can come down.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis, the bills that go to the mortgage company are sent out separately, so 7,500 bills are actually printed and sorted through IT, customer service, and the assessor's office. The others, we had about 20 that were actually printed that went to mortgage companies, and the other ones are sent by tape. So none of those were affected, that went to mortgage companies.
Okay.
It's just ones that went directly to the homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, but to piggyback off what Mr. Hare was saying, I do concur. Is there any way that we can somehow implement a extension or grace period, so these people will not be charged a late fee?
That would be up to council. This happens, our bills normally don't get calculated until July 1, and then with the holiday, they don't normally go out until about this time every other year. The only times that we've ever extended the delinquency date is if there was something with the budget, that there was a veto or something, or if it was a, a revaluation year. But this is, this is normal, except for the ones that are not getting them because of this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Suddler?
I think there needs to be at least a 30-day window, at the minimum, and at the most, 45 to 60 days, because a lot of seniors, they don't get their income until around the third of that, that month, or between the third and the 10th. So, I mean, I'm not requiring it, but I think that's something that we do need to consider, at least, at least... at least, at least 30 days' notice. Thank you.
We're a reasonable thing to offer for you to come back in two weeks and let us know, kind of a status update on this, and then if we need to take action as far as waiving the delinquency fees for a period, we could have better information at that time.
Yeah, I can see how, what the, what payments have come through, except for the mortgage companies, they don't usually pay until that last day the tapes come in, but we can at least try to see what we can do.
You could compare it against last year, what the rate of payment has been.
Yes.
Would that be fair to everyone involved? Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Mr. Koenig, do you have any other announcements for us?
No, sir.
Agenda Item Number 10 is council member announcements. Members of council, Councilman Sutherland?
On July 16, 2016, there will be a Fourth District Empowerment Barbecue Fair at Mousue Park, address 320 Raymond Street, Dover, Delaware 10904. Starts at 12:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m., hosted by Councilman Sutherland and myself. My second announcement is tomorrow, July 12, 2016, I have called for a unity march to show support for the two African-American males that have lost their lives, and the five police officers of Dallas who have lost their lives in the line of duty. I would like to thank the Dover Police Chief, Chief Burnett, for approving this march and assembly in such a sensitive time period. The march will begin near the railroad tracks, next to 500, the Duncan Center, at 4:30 p.m., and the march and assembly will end at 5:45 in front of City Hall. This march is for all of the city of Dover to unite and show support for our community and all communities throughout our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sutherland. Other announcements? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you're watching this, and it's 90 degrees in your house, you may need to touch base with first aid, community action, particularly if you have a health condition, someone in your family has a health condition, you're a senior citizen, there is money, there are programs for air conditioning. Don't suffer when there's help. You can call 1-800-372-2240, 800-372-2240, that's 372-2240. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Other announcements from members of council? Seeing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lewis, seconded by Councilman Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.